I would like to call to order the City of Sagatuck City Council Meeting for June 26. Would you all please join me for the pledge of
United States of America. To the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Baldwin.
Here.
Dean.
Here.
Gardner.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Muncie.
Here.
Stanton.
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Leo informed me that she had an event she needed to attend this evening. Could I get a motion to approve her absence?
Mayor?
Yes.
Motion to approve Councilmember Leo for the meeting.
Second.
Motion Lewis, second Baldwin. This will be a voice with all favorably say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you. I don't normally have a mayoral comments, but we were informed of some fairly significant developments in court today. And so I would like to share with you what happened at the county level. Today Judge Gingus dismissed two claims asserted by Dune Ridge in its lawsuit against the city, which alleged that the city promised that it would not regulate any structures over the water on its property and that the city breached this promise by regulating Dune Ridge's floating homes. Judge Gingus granted the city's motion for two motions for summary disposition on count one, breach of contract, and count three, promissory estoppel of Dune Ridge's complaint. Ruling that the city made no promise to refrain from regulating Dune Ridge's property. This ruling, along with the prior rulings by Judge Gingus, established that the city has the authority to regulate floating homes and that the city has not breached its agreements with its agreement with Dune Ridge by regulating the floating homes at its property. So the City of Sagatuck is pleased with today's ruling. And while we work to avoid costly and time consuming litigation, today's ruling should serve as notice that Sagatuck will not back down from challenges to our ordinances, which are designed to protect our quality of life and the character of our community. And if anyone doubts that resolve, I would just simply call to your attention in our staff reports, our planning and zoning administrators' most recent report. This is why we've hired extra staff. This is why we have talented and robust counsel that we leverage appropriately. So let there be no doubt in anyone's mind that we are going to protect the character of this community when we are going to vigorously defend our city's ordinances. With that, I'll turn it over to the city manager for any comments he may have.
Nice.
Mr. Mayor, thank you and well spoken. I have no comments. My report's on page 11. We'll get to that at some point.
Very good. Thank you. I would, we're now at agenda changes and I would like to offer an agenda change. I would like to add our county commissioner, Dean Capiga, as a guest speaker. Now, any other, well, let's move on that one. Do I have a motion to approve this addition?
Mayor?
Yes.
Move to approve adding Dean Cappinga as guest speaker.
Second.
Motion Lewis, second Stanton. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any other additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none. That takes us to item seven, guest speakers. Dean, you've at the floor.
Hi. I had an interesting morning. This morning I went to Palisades and I don't know if everyone knows what's going on there. So about a year and a half, Poltek is a scientist who's built nuclear, just a different type of power plant all around the world. And he bought that about a year and a half ago. So imagine that place had 600 employees. Now they have about 200 employees. They still have 200 employees. And they're petitioning and it's crucial this next month as far as that from Whitmer to Grand Home, as far as the funds needed through Grand Home and Whitmer, just to open that place up for renewable energy. And if I would just encourage you to look up Poltek design. Look at how it's safer, what it's producing, and then just compare that to electricity. This, so I was down there with Joey Andrews. He's really at the forefront of really trying to make the charge on this thing to go, man, we need this and done. Just you, just you know, they had 600 employees, about 100 of those lived in Allegan. And they plan to do the same thing with this thing's get, it's resurrected. It will take about two years. But I think the decision will probably be made in the next probably two months. You know, so if you know anybody off down, you know, but I think even what I'm really stressing is we have to just get educated on what it is, how much safer it is, what it can produce. You know, how more effective it is than solar. And just on solar, just on this past Saturday, they had a ripley cutting down on Pullman. And I was at the ripley cutting for a solar field there. They had 220 acres. It will produce enough energy just with the 220 acres for about 180,000 homes. You know, so that's really significant. And then you tie that to what nuclear could do. And the seed is different than what was there, you know, so to try to look it up, I would just really be like, wow, this is amazing. And then to think of not only the energy that we need and the safe energy that we need, but to think of the people that it would, you know, what it brings into the area. It's very good. I think a real significant thing this past meeting that we had, we ended up hiring Williams and Works. They're, they're going to develop a strategy for managing groundwater. I don't know of any other county in the state of Michigan. I tried to check to see if anybody's done that. We try to, we're trying to be at the forefront of going, we gotta take care of our water. And I heard you had some just water issues as far as this is it. This is what we're gonna do to try to make it. But it is, we're trying to do the same thing. So we're hiring this firm to come up with, how much do all the pivots draw from the aquifer? I know I went from Hamilton to Ben Time, just like two days ago, there was 11 pivots running. And I thought, how much water does that draw? You know? But anyway, to have, have a group, we have probably now about 15 to 20 test wells all around the county that are determining the draw that's happening and the purity that's happening. And then there's refining areas like, like Woods that need to stay there to refine the water that's coming down, to purify the aquifer that's there. But as far as the strategy for it, we don't have one. So we're, we hired this group for about $190,000. They're going to come up with a strategy to say, wait a second, is there actually a computer system, which there is, because we hired a group that just did that? So that Sagatuck, Lake Town can actually look at it and say, this group that wants to put in 100 houses, aquifer can't handle that, or it can handle that. Or we're drawing so much, we better stop any more additions to housing that's there. So anyway, that is, that is going to happen. And I think it's just a really step forward. And we'll end up meeting because we realize we can't speak for Sagatuck or any of the 24 townships. So we're trying to just jump in front of it going, hey, wait a second, here's a resource, here's a strategy, but townships and cities have to buy into it. You know, so we'll be coming with information to, to help give that to you to go, this is someplace that we should go. Or if it isn't, it's up to you. Also, I think everyone was familiar with Judge Gingus. You know, I was a police officer for 30 years. Rob was a prosecutor for me. He was tremendous. And that was a judge. He's been great. So I'm thankful he can retire. He wants to be with his kids. But we're going to replace three judges in the next two years. And I know this past, this past Thursday, we had the county minister, the court administrator give a report of numbers they've never seen before with felony trials, district court trials. And the, and the numbers are huge. I know I talked to Scott about the numbers as far as the backlog within all the court systems. And they are struggling with it because we're having such growth of the elegant county, you know, the third fastest growing county in the state of Michigan. And what was interesting about the report from the, from the court administrator was the thought of, you never really think of it, oh, we have a court, justice, fairness. And then they talked all about all the ways they're helping people, helping people that have an issue. It could be mental illness. It could be an addiction. They're just running at these people, trying to help them. And then they talked all about the juvenile court system of all the people that are there that really try to help these kids. So that they don't come back, that they can be active citizens. And I was like, you know, to think of that responsibility, justice, fairness, but they care for that person. I mean, that's in their heart, you know? So I think you'd be real proud of, of how hard they're working because they are to keep up with what they have. But then to equate those terms with, we're trying to look out for that person, that person that's been arrested and is in the system. How can we help, help them not to do this again? It was just excellent. I have a few other things, but you have a busy evening. Thanks for letting me speak.
All right.
And way to step up for all of us and be healthy.
You're always welcome, Dean. Particularly, I could always use the affirmation too. So, so thank you, please.
Thank you.
With that, we have no further guest speakers. We will go to number eight, public comment on agenda items only. Please limit your comments to three minutes and, and two items that are on tonight's agenda. I will open up a public comment on agenda items only for anyone here in the audience tonight. I see no one approaching the podium, so I will open up public comment to folks on the Zoom call. If you can raise your hand. Okay, I see, I see David Swan raising his hand. So David, please go ahead, just to state your name and your address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm David Swan. I live at 345 Griffith, at the corner of Griffith and Main. I just wanted to express the Coastal Alliance's thanks again to council for discussing today how the city can best provide public comment to Eagle regarding the proposed marina at the Kalamazoo River Mouth. The city's voice is incredibly important, given that the city is responsible for 16,000 front feet on the river. And what happens at the river there will have an incredible impact upon the city's most valuable assets. So thank you again for making this an agenda item. And I look forward to the city submitting a comment to Eagle. Thank you very much.
Thank you, David. Is there anyone else on the Zoom that wishes to offer a public comment? I don't see anyone. Jamie, do you?
No, I don't.
Okay, that will close our first public comment period of the evening. And that will take us to item nine, which is our consent agenda. These will be roll call votes. The first item we have is on page three of your packet. It is the regular city council meeting minutes of June 12, 2023.
Mayor?
Go ahead, Garn.
Move to approve the regular city council meeting minutes of June 12, 2023.
Second.
Motion Lewis, second Stanton. Any discussion? Hearing none. This will be a roll call vote.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Muncie?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Lewis Excuse.
Very good. Motion carries. That takes us to nine B, special city council meeting minutes of June 12, 2023, page eight of your packets.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Move to approve the special city council meeting minutes for June 12, 2023.
A second.
Motion Stanton, second Muncie. Any discussion among the council? Seeing none. This is also, yes. Oh, just.
Okey dokey.
So.
It's one motion.
Oh, okay.
Of the set of minutes.
Oh, it is? Okay. Okay. Sorry.
So Mayor, I think we can just go back to motion to approve the consent agenda.
Yeah. Okay. Yep. Do I have a second?
A second.
Is that going to work, Jake Clerk? Yeah. Stanton and Lewis. All right. Any discussion on any of those items? All right. None. Once again, roll call vote.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Muncie?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Thank you for that, Jamie. Thanks for keeping us all buttoned up. Appreciate it. That takes us to 10, staff reports, boards, commissions, and committees. This is on page 11 of your packets. First one is city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and welcome, everyone. The report is on page 11. Happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions for the manager? No. Good report. We're at A2, treasurer's report. Peter, anything unusual that you'd like to flag in your report?
No.
Okay. The treasurer, Pete, sorry, can you step up to the mic? Sorry.
No, I don't. It's all set. Well, you'll get the rest of it later tonight.
Nice trailer for that. That was good. Any questions for the treasurer before we get into the meat of it? No. Okay, great. Thank you, Peter. RC, anything that you want to flag in your report?
No, Mr. Mayor, unless there's questions. Happy to answer any questions.
I doesn't see, it looks like we're going to go through pretty quickly here. All right. Next up is Superintendent Herbert for Public Works. Anything you would like to flag, sir?
Madam Mustard's questions.
Any pressing questions for, for the superintendent?
Thank you.
Good to see you. Very good. I don't see a representative from the county sheriff on the line. No. I don't see Mr. Moxie on the Zoom either.
No, he said he might join later.
Okay, very good. So that takes us through our staff reports and on to B, boards, commissions, and committees. We do have Mr. Fox here from the Fire District Administration Board. Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Dan Fox, Council Representative to the Sagatuck Township Fire District Administrative Board. This report, brief report of our meeting on, at four o'clock on June 19, recently. Just a few things kind of out of the ordinary stuff. Announcement of the receipt of a MMR, MA municipal operation grant in, was received the amount of $5,500 and then change for dash cams, additional partial payment for dash cams. Chief updated us on cost recovery efforts, particularly they related to two illegal burns, one in the township and one that was a mutual aid down toward Casco. Pretty ugly fire with tires stored outdoors. It was nasty. I mean, the district needed to report to the EPA and the, I mean, the black cloud, the whole mess. Anyway, I think so that has like an out, we have an outstanding request for $7,000 and change in cost recovery combined out of those, those two events. Under new business, we, early in the meeting, we held the public hearing on the fire district's fiscal budget for the coming year. That was opened and closed without comment. And later in the meeting, we had a roll call vote, the, the board approved the fire district's budget. So that's now old news. We also received correspondence, got the auditor's letter, favorable auditor's letter. Peter collects those, right? He collects them framed in his house. And we got to thank you from the Dean family, not Dean, Dean with an M, that own the, and apparently have owned the White House for 85 years. That fire out on the beach, as I'm given to understand by the chief, singed the boards on the deck of that building. So it was that close and very sweet, very sweet and heartfelt. Thank you note from, from the family. Finally, we spent a fair amount of time, as we have on other meetings, talking more about where we're headed or where the fact finding and so forth related to the ambulance situation within, within the fire district, all three jurisdictions. There's at least an interesting, I don't want to get into it because it's too complex and I don't understand it in every detail, but there's at least an interesting possibility on the board, supplier on the board that we hadn't encountered earlier, simply because they're not directly in this area, but they are close enough that we're going to take a good look at them. And just as a, and a follow up to a heads up, I think I gave you once before, ultimately, this situation, whatever gets proposed is going to probably have to be resolved with an intergovernmental agreement between three jurisdictions that make up the fire district, because all three of those jurisdictions have the legal authority and responsibility for ambulance service. If that's to be conveyed to another party, then that needs to be done by agreement or whatever. It is simply amazing, even, even to us on the fire board, that ambulance service in this area is based on no piece of paper. It's a handshake agreement. And we all know how good handshake agreements are. So that's partly prompting us in our efforts, but also increased service levels as well. So lots of questions there, but slowly but surely moving forward. Any questions? By all means, shoot them to me or I can get an answer if I don't have it.
Any questions for Dan?
I'm just real quick. Are all your vehicles equipped with the dash cams now?
Not yet. This is, this is an expansion.
Okay.
And I don't have the total number. I want to say it's over $30,000. That grant was, is like lots of grants. It's a portion. It's not the whole, whole deal.
Right.
All of, I shouldn't speak for them, but I believe all the squad cars carry dash cams.
Right, right.
We don't have, I mean, there's, quite honestly, there are vehicles, we probably won't put dash cams on because they're just not purposeful.
Okay.
Good vehicles that aren't used that often or whatever. So.
I was just curious. I didn't know that our fire vehicles, any of them had dash cams. I think that's a good idea.
Sometime I'll send you a video taken from one of them on the fire out on Old Elegant, barely.
Oh, please do.
Almost like Hollywood quality video.
The, the, the old, the White's House, the
I don't know that. I forget the name of near Scott Phelps.
Oh, Phelps House, yeah.
Out there. I think he owned the house at one.
Right, correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That house, that's, yeah. It's got several months.
Great. Anything else for Dan?
Oh, I should also mention in, in the, I think in the last meeting I mentioned, or I say, I guess I sent you the note on the two vehicle accidents in town, the rollover, the halfway rollover. I neglected to mention that on that one with the Jeep halfway rolled over, none other than your city manager aided the emergency service providers in getting traffic through there, which was no smooth feat. And that's always appreciated when somebody steps up.
There you go. With Mr. Ralph Troutman. What, the fire chief back in the day?
Yep.
I'm not going to answer that.
Okay.
Well, well, well done in the lesson. It is great to have people that are trained. There was a pretty bad accident yesterday at Maple and Blue Star. And I don't know who the young man was, but he, he had one of those lights on his private vehicle. And I don't know what department he was with or what type of responder he was, but he, he just took the initiative and controlled traffic until, until first responders arrived. So.
North.
Yeah. So it's just, it does, it does. Thank you again, Dan.
Thanks, Danny.
Great. That takes us to B2, interurban board. Gregory, I think you'd like to share on interurban?
Yeah, we, you know, Philocyte does such a good job writing grant after grant after grant for us. Our last one did not go through for new garage doors and a new vestibule. However, we are kind of comfortable right now where we're at. So we might be able to do some of that work on our own anyway, much needed replacement of our garage doors. We're at 59% of our budget of our fiscal year. And last year we were at 61% of our budget. So we're doing well that way. Phyllis is just a genius. And our ridership is up 20, 20, almost 27%. We had 5,307 riders throughout the month of May, and we're back just a little above pre-pandemic levels. So we're happy about that.
Great. Thank you. Anything for Gregory?
Oh, I'm sorry. And your requested little blockers with the QR code. Those have been printed. All I have to do is pick them up and I'll be doing that this week to get them around town.
Thank you. That's great.
Excellent. That takes us to item three, Cal Lake Sewer and Water Authority. We do have Barry Johnson on the line. So Barry, feel free to have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Greetings, council. We actually had our meeting today, this morning, and quick rundown, our monthly water report was submitted without issue and all bacterial samples are collected and reported appropriately. We have the water report, water quality report is now posted on our website, as well as we've sent that to the city of Sagatuck if they want to post it as well. We're doing, continuing to do our lead and copper sampling at residential homes for the lead and copper rule for monitoring purposes begun on June 1st. The homes that participate are all verified to be lead services and/or plumbing, as opposed to many homes without lead plumbing and/or lead services. The result of this year's sampling will be available after the event concurs on September 30th with the water system's reportable levels of lead and copper in our drinking water determined by the Eagle at a much later date, typically in November and December. Very apropos with Commissioner Cappinga talking about water. As you know, we're in a drought and the, our water system is really stressed out. And at the end of dry April and into drier May and now hotter and drier June, it's a substantial concern of adequate water supply. We must currently run all available wells for 14 hours per day and several wells running much longer to meet daily water demands. We kind of peg our system at 2 million gallons a day. We've been running over that. And it's basically because of irrigation. Everybody's trying to keep their lawns alive. Doesn't work for me. And we cannot even come close to matching the water demand and are experiencing a five to six foot loss of stored water while the walls run. And that would be up in the reservoir. We would urge the public to shift their irrigation timing away from the hours between 3:00 and 7:00 AM. If there's not a rain relief to decrease the current irrigation demands causing the significant water demands, we may need to issue an irrigation ban or restriction. We are not yet, but as we all got to think about that. An irrigation ban or restriction would be necessary to ensure the adequate water supply for fire suppression purposes. So let's say we had a fire at the time when we're pumping water up to the reservoir between 3:00 and 7:00, we get a five alarm fire, we get multiple fire hoses trying to put that fire out when we're trying to fill the reservoir. That's a recipe for disaster. So this drought is really causing some problems. As far as city of Sagatuck, the staff did an emergency water service repair on May 24th and 25th after discovering a service leak that was suspected to be a water main. And that was on water, excuse me, on Hoffman Street, which I can see from my window right now, Hoffman and St. Joe. And so when the Cal Lake got into the ground, it was discovered that it was a leaded water service with a bunch more leaded services that the city's engineer can now classify as known leaded services to aid in their work for the lead and copper rule. The leaking leaded service was replaced with one inch copper material in the right of way and reconnected to a one inch copper tail from the curved stop valve. A sample for the lead collected from their sink and verified there was non-detectable lead in the water at that house. And then on June 16th, Bruce's Blacktop came in and repaved that. And I would, I would suspect that anybody living on the hill saw that camaraderie of people fixing that leak. They had a bunch of people there. We verified our operations supervisor that 18,690 feet of sewer was jet cleaned over the past 30 days. The areas recently cleaned are the sections known to experience routine issues related to accumulated grease, roots, and other debris and items of concern such as convenience wipes that should be not be flushed regardless of labeling on the packaging. We have posted a pamphlet from the Michigan Rural Water Association on our website. We also forwarded that to the city manager. And you may want to consider posting that on our website. But this kind of has a far reaching situation with our short term rentals. So constant turnover, you may have a property, a short term rental turnover twice in one week. How do we get the message to these people that you cannot flush down the convenience wipes? And so we have a challenge on that. So something we can talk about as we go down the road, but we haven't had a fat bird incident in probably three months, but it's just waiting to happen if we don't tackle this. And again, the short term rentals are something to really consider. We're hiring a operations supervisor that's experienced in water and wastewater operation. Did the final interview today. I don't know. Uh, did the final interview today. I don't know the results of that yet. We have a proposal from police and Vanderbrink for sewer cleaning and CCTV work. For this fall and early winter and that CCTV is where we put a camera down into our sewer lines. And look for problems, uh, blockages. Uh, just keeping an eye on it and we do certain amount of those every year. And we budgeted enough in there so that if they hit a problem. That there's enough money in there to to uh, do a repair on that while they've identified where it is. So. Let's see, we've updated our wellhead production plan. And again, the wellhead production, we've got to keep looking for new wells. The Sagatuck wells have been around for a long time. Uh, they're probably our least uh, producing wells now. There's much newer wells. With some of the best in the township. Uh, but we have to keep looking for new wells and uh, the city does participate in that. Brian's familiar with that. Our engineers, uh, city engineers are also uh, involved in that. So. So we are updating that wellhead production plan. Uh, you have to do it every five years. Uh, we need to look ahead. And also has a much. Commissioner Cappinga was talking about with all the development that is requested, do we have the water resources to uh, do that growth? And uh, the biggest challenge I'm sure will be in the township because they own the least amount of capacity. In the system, but have the largest potential for development. And uh, in fact, the auto camp uh, that you've all heard about. Uh, the demand there was such that the township is negotiating with Douglas to buy some of their capacity. To service that uh, project. So we're really kind of hitting the wall. Another reason for uh, wellhead protection of finding a well. So. That's all I got. Any questions?
Mayor, uh, may I ask a question?
Go ahead, Lauren.
Barry, it's Lauren Stanton. Uh, just to clarify, is Cal Lake asking residents to not water their lawn between three and seven AM?
We are not. No, we're we're not doing a ban, but we got to get the word out, you know, that. Uh, it could create a catastrophic problem if everybody's uh, irrigating and we get a two alarm, three alarm fire. Now, we have not uh, asked for a ban yet. Uh, but uh, the Cal Lake and Ryan and you know, the Douglas and township people. Uh, could be in that discussion if we get to that point and looking at right now. We're losing six feet every day in the reservoir and it gets a little scary. So I don't know how we get the word out to say, you know, please don't water your, this is not a ban or restriction, but. Can you not do it between, you know, those hours? In the uh, dead of night, which is when we pump the water up there when the rates are electoral rates are lower.
Seems like an easy suggestion.
Right.
Yeah, you do. You do have Mr. Sullivan from the commercial record on on the Zoom with us. So yeah, Russ, did you have something?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Johnson. Um, I I don't recall ever hearing the message you gave tonight. It's very dry. Presentation this evening, pun intended. Um, I don't ever recall this community ever being in a position of having to think about water restrictions. Um, I think most people that live here and have lived here for a long time would think, well, we've got a huge body of water, literally, you know, half a mile from us. But our wells are not supplied by the big lake. Uh, you know, it's all aquifers and so forth. So. You know, with the growth and the it just, there's a number of factors that are feeding into this and the drought being the main one. Um, it it just reminds me of how important, how important this issue is. Uh, from a management standpoint, as we're talking about this evening as well as just long term planning. To ensure that we've got good, safe and plentiful water. I mean, I don't think twice about turning my faucet on and clean water, right? And it coming on and water flowing, but um, yeah, so thank you for your report this evening and um, just. Raising the consciousness is important. I totally agree.
Thank you, uh, Russ. That that's very true and. Uh, we can kind of identify some of the people that have irrigation systems because they have a deduct meter. Uh, so they're not paying sewer on the water they use for irrigation. But that doesn't include everybody on my street that's got a sprinkler out, running it just off their normal water, you know, bill. And uh, so yeah, it's a tough message. And uh, again, to answer your question, of course, Mark Becken knows everything from the beginning. And uh, we did have a water ban many, many years ago and. It's when we were just running the city at that time with just the two Sagatuck wells. So it was pretty critical and uh, but we got through it and uh, hopefully we'll get through this one, but it's the. I'm sure Ryan and uh, you know, the Douglas and the township people and and Daryl, our director. If it gets that critical, they're all be in the loop.
Great. Um, anything else? Did you have something?
Yeah, I just want to let you know, uh, Barry, that you mentioned something about, you know, of course, short term rentals and let you know that, you know, you know, I work part time. Uh, for Mill Pond Realty, we have a laminated sign that we put at our toilets that say toilet paper only. Uh, to be flushed in our toilets. And and so I think that's a good idea. If anybody's listening or anyone's here that has rentals, it's a real easy. Uh, help. Um, and we make sure we have waste baskets in our bathroom. We we we've understood that issue. And so we're helping with that as well. And I mentioned it on our radio show. I've mentioned it several times. So.
You know, if I if I may comment on that, uh, that's great, Greg, but people see this uh, disposable wipe thing. It says plumber approved. Okay to flush biodegradable. And I encourage those signs to be a little more specific about convenience wipes.
Correct. Yeah, dude. Uh, any anything else for um, for Barry? I think great. Barry, thank you very much. That was very thorough and uh, very timely. So thank you. Uh, that takes us over to a Cal Lake Harbor Authority.
The Harbor Authority hasn't met for the last two months, but um, if you noticed in the engineering report, they do have um, bids due. Uh, by July twenty seventh for the Blue Star Bridge navigation lights. And that work they're hoping would be done by Memorial Day next year. So they expanded the bids because as you know, it was way too expensive. Uh, so that's the latest from Harbor Authority.
Thanks, Lauren. Anything for Lauren? No, nothing. All right. Um, ZBA, I don't believe we have anybody from ZBA on the line. Uh, so that takes us to six historic district commission. Anything, Garnet?
Nope. Our next meeting is uh, July the sixth and items were covered in RC's report. Right.
Uh, that takes us to seven planning commission.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. We met on the fifteenth of June. Uh, we did not have any applications to process. However, we had a spirited discussion on this uh, short term rental task force. Uh, Chairman Holly or Chairperson Holly Anderson gave us an update, which I think we'll get some information this evening as well. Um, really talking about and the planning commission as well, talking about community engagement on the waterfront moratorium. Uh, we have some plans to engage the community on getting their feedback on what they think. They would like to see in terms of the waterfront, not only from residents, but but from visitors. So um, stay tuned. We'll have some exciting things happening to um, get that out.
Great. And.
Yeah, short term rental. Um, it's on the agenda tonight as far as the latest update. So.
Okay, wonderful. Uh, eight Parks and Public Works Committee, Helen, anything?
Uh, we meet tomorrow morning.
Wonderful. Uh, Holly is uh, at an event for the for the friends. Uh, Garnet, you've been tracking as well. So anything you want to share on that?
Nope, nothing.
Okay, great. And then ten try community recycling ad hoc, anything?
Nothing.
Nothing, nothing for tonight. Okay, thank you. Uh, that concludes uh, the item ten B. We are now at eleven request for payment. We have none. Uh, that takes us to twelve approval of accounts payable. Uh, roll call vote. We have accounts payable in the amount of ninety thousand thirty eight dollars and seventy two cents.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the accounts payable in the amount of ninety thousand thirty eight dollars and seventy two cents as presented.
I'll second.
Motion Gardner, second Muncy. Any discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Gardner?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Muncy?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Motion is very good. Thank you. Uh, this takes us to item fourteen. This is a public hearing. So um, I would like it within within the course of this meeting on page thirty, call to order uh, the public hearing. For our fiscal year twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four budget. That is the budget for the city of Sagatuck for fiscal year twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four. I have, so I have called the meeting to to order. Uh, now we, it's almost like a mini meeting inside a meeting. So uh, we have public comment available. Uh, for any public comment regarding the proposed uh, fiscal year twenty twenty three, twenty four budget. Do I have any public comment in the room? I see none. I will open up the Zoom to anyone that has public comment. Do you see any hands raised? Jamie? Okay. So I believe that. Closes the public comment period. Now we we are item D, which is council comment. Uh, councils welcome to make any comments they wish on the budget. I will start with um, Councilmember Lewis.
No, I'm good. We've had, uh, I think we've had eight. Meetings, workshops or meetings where we've in some way. Address the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four budget in addition to uh, meetings with the treasurer. So I feel comfortable with where we're at. Thank you very much.
Very good. Counselor.
Yes, thanks, Mayor. I just want to express my gratitude to the treasurer for preparing the report. Um, I did bring up at the workshop that I do have some concerns about the uh, seventy thousand dollar position. Uh, when it comes time to discuss that, I will. Um, I think the council should have some expectations around measuring how that's going to be um. Worked and and some other discussion around that. That's that's an important topic. Uh, two is um, I would like counsel and I mentioned this at the workshop as well that. Um, I I think we have an opportunity to uh, more from a procedural standpoint. Plan ahead for these discussions. Uh, this is a wonderful report. It's exactly the information that I like to see. As a council member, as well as the community would like to see. Um, why we didn't have this at the workshop last Wednesday, I'm not sure. But I would ask that the council put this on its agenda to have a discussion about setting up a procedural plan for budget presentations going forward. So we can start talking about this earlier. Otherwise, I remain supportive of the budget. Thank you.
No, just uh, thanks to Peter for preparing this and Helen, thank you for joining me. Uh, and Garnet was there too, but I wanted to be along with Helen just so. I could hear some of her questions because I feel like obviously she has a lot more experience with budgets than I do. And it was really nice to have. You with me as we were, you know, you were asking him questions that educated me and I appreciated that. Um, you know, just Scott and our engineers and all the work that you guys do on your budgets as well that goes into the overall city budget. Think it looks good and I appreciate everyone's hard work.
Uh, Gregory, any comments you'd like to offer?
I'm not really um, gone over it enough. I had some questions that never answered. Thank you very much to Ryan for answering some. And I want to thank you also, um, Peter. Uh, for the time that you spent. I also doubled up with another council member, uh, council member Russ. And uh, he asked questions that I wouldn't have asked and I asked questions that he wouldn't have asked. And I just really appreciate the time that you took us through that. So. Um, but I'm happy with it. Um, and I'm ready to approve it.
Anything, Helen?
Uh, yeah, also want to thank, want to thank Peter for being very thorough in accommodating all of our questions. I would like to see, um, I would echo uh, Councilmember Gardner and that I would like to see more frequent updates. I would say we should at least look at these quarterly and do some kind of um, budget actual analysis at that point. And I'd be in favor of having something like that. Also, I'd like to see our legal fees is a big number and I'd like to see the breakout by category. You know, what we've got to, you know, defend ourselves in the Dune Ridge, I know is the lion's share of those um, fees. And it'd be nice to see this on a quarterly basis. So I'd advocate for those. And other than that, I'm absolutely ready to approve the budget tonight.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember. Um, I would just say that um, I would once again like to reiterate our thanks to to Peter uh, for for a great job with the budget. Thank you. Thank you, Ryan, as well and the rest of staff for 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 all your work on this. You know, uh, we have before us a balanced budget uh, with an operating millage for twenty twenty three, twenty four, which remains the lowest it has been over a twelve year historical period. Indeed, uh, of the nine kind of larger communities in Allegan County, I believe our our millage is the eighth lowest of the nine. So um, you know, there's been a lot of change. You know, Sagatuck, I like to say is a small town with a lot of big city issues that it's dealing with, but. Uh, compliments to all the staff for coming up with innovative solutions. Scott Herbert's here. He's come up with some cost saving measures which involve a little bit of investment in in some equipment to to make our road work a little bit more more productive and more efficient. Uh, Peter's done absolute magic with, you know, getting getting this an exactly balanced budget that that. Responds to some of the issues we're dealing with. You know, we we have incurred more litigation, I think for all the right reasons. Um, but but Peter's found a way to um, address the. Needs of the council. I think we've all had individual conversations or collective conversations to, you know, two of us at a time or one of us at a time. And I and I feel that Peter has done an excellent job of incorporating the feedback from the council, which means you're basically getting feedback from the community. So. Peter, but kudos and and thank you for that. Um, and with that, I will um, I will. Close this hearing. Uh, so this public hearing is hereby closed. That will take us to. I'm, okay, that will take us to fifteen, which is unfinished business. There is none. And now we're we're going to return under new business to familiar territory. You will see three resolutions, A, B, and C. Which all pertain to uh, to the budget. So the first one you will find on, I believe, page seventy nine of your packet. We're going to have to bounce around a little bit in the packet. So apologies to everyone on this one. There's going to be a bit of a. Back and forth on this as we go through the um, through the official resolutions.
All right, Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, move motion to approve resolution two, three, zero, six, two, seven, dash, A, amending the fiscal year twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three budget as presented.
I'll second.
Motion Lewis, second Muncy. Any discussion? Hearing none. Uh, this will be a roll call vote. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Gardner?
Yes.
Muncy?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Leo's excuse. Motion pass.
Thank you. Uh, we are now at sixteen B, which is resolution two, three, zero, two, six, two, B, which is a general appropriations act. It's a roll call vote. And I believe it says page thirty one in your packet, but I believe if I'm not mistaken, the actual motion would be on page forty four, but let's double check that.
Thirty four.
Did you say thirty four? Forty forty four. Okay, thank you, Jamie. And that's really, it's it's not a draft motion. It's basically just kind of at the header up there at the top.
Mayor, if I may, um, motion to approve resolution two, three, zero, six, two, six, dash, B, resolution adopting our general appropriations act.
Second.
Motion Lewis, second Baldwin. Any discussion among the council? Hearing none. This is also a roll call vote with the clerk. Please call the roll.
Dean?
Yes.
Muncy?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Leo's excuse. Motion pass.
Very good. Thank you. We are now at sixteen C, which is resolution two, three, zero, six, two, six, dash, C, PA one, five, two, compliance. Uh, this is on page eighty five and it's a roll call. This will be our last step in the process.
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Gregory.
Um, I'd like to make a motion to pass resolution two, three, zero, six, two, six, dash, C, PA one, fifty two, compliance.
Uh, Gregory, could I ask you to uh, read it one more time just?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion to pass uh, to uh.
The language, you see the language on page eighty five?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, eighty six. Yeah.
Make a motion to approve resolution number two, three, zero, six, two, six, dash, C as presented. Thank you.
Motion Muncy, second Stanton. Thank you. Um, any discussion on this? Hearing none. This is also a roll call vote with the clerk. Please call the roll.
Muncy?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Leo's excuse. Motion.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you all for your uh, attention on that. It's probably one of the most important jobs we have as a council. So thank you for your kind attention to this matter. Uh, we are now at sixteen D. This is a coastal alliance request Eagle resolution roll call page ninety. This was subject to a, to our workshop. I think most of you are familiar. Uh, I believe Mr. Swan and member of the coastal alliances on the line. Should we have any need to ask them anything? But I think I've heard from the council during the workshop, so.
If I may, I'm going to get some clarification on what what it is. Remind me what it is we're looking to approve. What's?
I believe it is a a letter. Of support of what the um, coastal alliances is advancing before the state of Michigan's uh, Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy. And as you all know, that is uh, my day job. So I um, I will vote present uh, or be just. Counted as present for this vote. Jamie, if that's all right.
So you're abstain from the vote?
Abstain. Uh, due to a potential conflict and and council has in in past matters regarding this. Going before Eagle, the council has, legal council is thought that is appropriate.
Mr. Mayor, to answer the question that was asked, my understanding is that this is a motion to approve. The city's attorney to draft a letter of support in response to the request from Eagle. That's essentially what we're acting on this evening. Is that correct?
Uh, that is correct.
That's my understanding.
And we do have a legal counsel here if if we need any clarity, but I believe that is the. And we do have the legal counsel here if we need any clarity, but I believe that is the case. Yes.
Mr. Mayor, you did discuss this at your workshop.
Yes.
And so the, the, the difference is the city drafted a sixty five point, I think it is, a letter to the Army Corps of Engineers on very similar subject. This one would be subject to Eagle. However, we do want to be careful since it's a different group that we drafted very carefully. Although we think we can use most of the verbiage that we used in the previous letter. So basically what you'd be approving is support for the coastal alliance. But you have to spend a little bit more money to draft a new letter. And Jake, if you want to speak to it, you're welcome to. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Mayor Dean, I did have a chance. I saw David Swan at an event over the weekend. And David, if you could, there's a date that they're taking this through July. What did you tell me yesterday, Saturday? They'll be accepting submissions through July.
Twentieth, and the public hearing will be on July tenth, Monday, July tenth at six thirty. That will be a virtual public hearing.
Thank you. So July twentieth is essentially our date.
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, I'll take a stab at it if I may.
Thank you.
Mayor, a motion to approve the city attorney drafting a letter of support for the coastal alliance.
Second.
Motion Lewis, second Gardner, any discussion? We have this down as a roll call. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Baldwin?
Yes.
Dean abstains. Gardner?
Yes.
Leo's excused. Lewis?
Yes.
Muncie?
Yes.
And? Yes.
Motion carries.
Very good. Thank you, Jamie. Sixteen, we are now at sixteen E, right of way encroachment request two, forty six Culver Street. This will be a voice vote. It's on page ninety two of your packets. Thank you, Ryan.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, City Council members. Yeah, you discussed this at your workshop at length. There's a request from two, forty six Culver, the new owners to place some flower boxes back on the building that were there several years ago, but haven't been there in some time. So at your workshop meeting, there was a question that came up about snow removal equipment. If there are any concerns from the Department of Public Works on that. I emailed Mr. Herbert last week. He indicated that the snow equipment's, you know, five feet wide and long as there was at least six foot of space that he didn't have concerns and it didn't sound like a particular concern with that, that location at this time with the flower boxes being out.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead, Gregory.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the revocable license agreement for window flower boxes in the public right of way for LP Operations Incorporated.
Second.
Motion Muncie, second Stanton, any further discussion?
No, they're lovely.
Okay, very good. Very good, agree. This is, this, this can be handled with a voice vote. So all in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Very good. That takes us to sidewalk seating agreement. This is, I'm sorry, sixteen F on your agenda. Sidewalk seating agreement one, twenty seven Hoffman on common ground. Also a voice vote. You'll find it on page one oh one.
Mayor?
Yes, Garn.
Motion to approve the revocable license agreement for temporary restaurant seating and the public right of way for ME Coffee Holdings LLC, DBA Uncommon Coffee Roasters.
Second.
Motion Lewis, second Stanton. Also, also subject to our workshop last week, any further discussion? Hearing none. I think this will, this is also a voice vote. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are now at sixteen G, S T R Task Force Engagement Proposal. This will be a roll call and you'll find it on page one eleven. We've got both the, our, our council rep and we also have RC at the podium. So RC, you want to kick it off?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, so we discussed this a little bit at your workshop meeting as well, that the short term rental task force has met five times now. Certainly getting a lot of comments at the meetings via Zoom as well as folks who are attending in person. We're posting everything on your website, shooting it out in your e-news blast. All the meeting videos are available after the meetings. The resolution that actually formed the task force recommended, or, or, well, you stated via your resolution that the, the short term rental task force should gather resident property and business owner feedback in the form of forums and surveys. And so McKenna Associates, your planning consultant who's working with us on this project and myself are recommending that you in fact do conduct the survey as well as a town hall meeting. It's kind of a more proactive form of public engagement. There's some folks that may not feel as comfortable maybe attending a meeting or speaking at the podium, but maybe more willing to provide their comments via survey, maybe a more kind of informal town hall where they're able to have more interaction with staff and consultants and task force members. So the task force did discuss this at their last couple of meetings. I think there's consensus at this time for a survey. Councilmember Stanton did kind of ask a question about whether or not, you know, this can maybe be conducted in-house by staff. Certainly, you know, staff, we're gonna use all of our available tools to kind of push this out via our e-news blast, our website, our social media tools, but feel it's best that McKenna probably develop those survey questions. They're a third party and kind of going to maintain that neutrality there. And then the town hall is, you know, kind of receives some mixed reactions from the, the task force members. I think cost was the largest concern there. So that's something that, that you'd have to consider, but you just passed your budget for next year. So we do have funding if you're willing to approve funding for a town hall.
Yeah, and it's just as far as the task force and discussions that were had, you know, people have three minutes to talk, right? And by having a town hall type thing where there's actually, you know, how you do the whiteboards and there's a little bit more discussion back and forth, a little bit more education and a little bit more, you know, just having more engagement. And that's the idea behind this is giving people more of a say and having like discussions where you can talk one on one with each other and have more discussions about priorities and and opportunities and all of those things. So I think our residents probably would enjoy that and be able to have, you know, better feedback.
I would echo that. I think the engagement is key. The three minutes people get up and they say their piece and sometimes they feel like it just goes into the void. So to have an ability for people to, and I was reading in detail the McKenna proposal where they could even set you in different workshops basically within the town hall. I think it sounded, I think it sounded
Okay.
like a good idea.
I don't mean to cut you off, Helen, but I think we're probably ready for a motion. If we're gonna go deliberately on this, yeah, go ahead.
Motion to approve the McKenna Associates Short Term Rental Task Force Community Engagement Proposal and Cost.
Second.
Motion Lewis, second Baldwin. Now, we could have a discussion if anybody wants to kind of talk a little bit more about it. Go ahead, Russ.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you. And I'm in support of all the comments that have been made. We discussed this at length at the Planning Commission and Chairperson Anderson was, was, as well as a couple of the planning commissioners were in support of this. And the planning commission is trying to take the same approach with the waterfront moratorium. In my opinion, success of these projects rests on if I hear from someone after the project is done and a report is released that someone said, no one ever told me about this. No one ever came and talked to me about this. I have failed. And so I would encourage and encourage the planning commissioner with the waterfront moratorium is go to the people. Don't expect the people to come to you. And so that means, you know, I've got three whole, three households on my four blocks that are not online. They are not on the email blast. They have opinions about these issues, but I have to go knock on their doors and actually talk with them. And I'm going to do that for the planning commission because I want to hear from them. So I encourage everybody that's on these commissions. I know it's a lot of work. It's all volunteer. It takes time, but it's incredibly important that people feel as though they've been met where they are.
Any other comments from the council? On this? Great. Then we have a motion on the floor and this is a roll call vote. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Dean?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Muncie?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Leo's excused. Motion pass.
Thank you. We are now at sixteen H, Planning Commission and Z B A reappointments. This is on page one sixteen of the packet. Also something we discussed on Wednesday. There's, go, go ahead.
We happen to make a motion to reappoint Ann Broker to the planning commission with a term ending July first, twenty twenty six, Stephen Mans to the planning commission with a term ending July twenty, July first, twenty twenty six, and James Bauk to the zoning board of appeals with a term ending July first, twenty twenty six.
Second.
Motion Gardner, second Baldwin. Any further discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor, I would just add, I've had the honor of serving with Commissioner Broker and Chairman Mans and it's been a pleasure. They've really, I, I'm very proud and humbled to be able to serve with those folks. And I know Mr. Bauk as well has done a fantastic job. Talked with Mr. Kabaziak, the chair about his performance and we're lucky to have folks like this that continue to be interested to serve. So I appreciate their service. Thank you.
Any further council comments? I couldn't agree more with your comments, Russ. Thank you. With that, we can have a roll call vote on this. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Baldwin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Muncie?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Leo's excused. Motion carries.
Very good. We are at sixteen I signage request, fourth of July, voice vote, page one twenty nine of the packet.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion to approve signage for the fourth of July events.
Second. Motion, motion Stanton, second Lewis. Any discussion on this? Hearing none. This was, will be a voice vote. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? None, motion carries. We are now at special event Mount Bald Head Challenge. This is sixteen J in the packet. It's a voice vote, page one thirty.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Motion to approve the Mount Bald Head Challenge to take place on September ninth, twenty twenty three, organized by the Rotary Club of Sagatuck and Douglas.
Second.
Motion Stanton, second by Gardner. Any discussion?
Gregory keeps getting left out.
I just, I just, I just, I just hope Commissioner Kaffika doesn't expect the same performance from me in September.
At least I got my flower box.
I don't think I can beat anybody with skipping rope, even, even in, even in the sand. Right, very good. So yeah, life is so funny to you. Anyways, it's so slow. This is a voice vote. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? None, none. Motion carries unanimously. We are now at sixteen K Water Asset Management Plan and Rate Study. It's a roll call, page one thirty eight.
Mayor?
So I got.
Motion to approve proposal provided by Baker Tilly for asset management plan and rate study in the amount of $10,500.
Second.
Motion Lewis, second Baldwin. Discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I would just add that this can be an incredibly important effort for the city and the citizens. It's going to result in some increases to water bills. We have some work that we need to do to make sure our assets are protected and I don't like increases in my bills, but I also don't mind spending money for making improvements. So looking forward to the study and let's go. Love infrastructure. Here we go.
Yeah. Indeed. Any other council comments? Once again, I would, I would agree with that. And it touches on our earlier conversation in this meeting, you know, your, your water is something that's kind of out of sight, out of mind until it's not there. And then it's a big problem. Just, just ask the folks in my household. We've got a backed up sink right now and it's throwing the entire household into chaos. You wouldn't believe it. The chaos in our household right now. The whole dinner plan, the lunch plan, people's diet requirements.
Have you considered having it fixed?
The name of your plumber because we couldn't get one today. Okay, we'll talk afterwards because we're, we're
Bless your heart.
We're opening till tomorrow until the guy with the giant, you know, lumberjack machine can cut the roots out of our, out of our sewer pipe. So yeah, okay. Okay, great. This is gonna be a roll call vote. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Stanton?
Yes.
Muncie?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Leo's excused. Gardner?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
All right. Last item on new business, sixteen L, recommendation of award twenty twenty three crack ceiling.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion that we accept the recommendation award twenty twenty three crack ceiling as presented by Fleece and Ben Brink.
Second.
Motion Gardner, second Stanton. Any discussion on this award?
I just like seeing the work getting done around here.
Oh, yeah, hundred percent. I would also say we have a crack in the ceiling of our house. So it is added to, it is added to the chaos that we've been dealing with at the corner of Francis and St. Joseph. I mean, it's like, you wouldn't believe it. It's like, it's, it's like a constantly shifting cast of characters coming through the house. The dog is so happy. They're like, like new people to meet every day. The plaster, the plaster guy and the, and the dog are on like first name basis now. So anyways, this, I believe if there's no further discussion about my terrible home life, we will call the roll.
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Leo's excused. Lewis?
Yes.
Muncie?
Yes.
Yes.
Very good. We are now at item seventeen of our agenda. This is public comments on any item. Three minutes limit as usual. Anyone in the audience that wishes to offer public comment? I see no one in the audience that wishes to offer public comment. I will open it up to the Zoom call. Anybody on the Zoom call that wishes to offer public comment? I see nothing. Clerk sees nothing. We will close public comment. We have correspondence eighteen from Mr. Fox. That takes us to council comment. I'll start with Helen, if I may.
All set. PPW meeting first thing tomorrow morning. And I do want to thank actually you folks for approving the Mount Bald Head Challenge. It's a, it's really wonderful event. I know it's every year and it's fun solely the boys and girls club. At our local schools and it's just a wonderful event and fabulous funds to be raised for a good cause. Thank you.
I just want to welcome the James to our business district, new women's clothing store and let everybody know he's giving away $250 gift certificate. All you have to do is give him your name and your email address and you will get a $250 shopping spree that he's going to draw at the end of this week. So go get some new clothes, girls.
Oh, nice. Um, just, it's really nice to see all the new asphalt in town. So many streets look beautiful and it's great to see. That's it.
Thank you. I'm impressed by council this evening, getting through this agenda and probably about maybe seventy minutes or so. Pretty good, pretty good performance. I, I do have to say this is kind of an interesting situation. We have two homes near us that have recently become full time residents that were previously rentals. So kind of an interesting, you know, people choosing to live here full time coming from Chicagoland area. So I, it's just kind of interesting. So welcome our new neighbors. Also too, I did ask the city manager and he has not been able to pull the information together. I did ask for an accounting of the fourth of July events at this point, projected costs as well as expected revenues. And I know he's working on that. Thank you. Also notice on page twenty six, the fleece and Vandenbrink's report. Our budget's pretty heavy on infrastructure, which I'm pleased with. It's, it's, it's really encouraging. One item is Mount Bald Head conceptual planning. I know that they're working on that. One thing I would say is very incredibly important is dune stabilization. We've learned through a number of different ways that that dune is, well, a dune is a moving object. It is not a stable object. And with the damage that was done to the east side of the dune with the remediation for Oriental Bittersweet has literally created a trough coming down the side of the dune and, and the dune's at risk. And I would just encourage that that plan includes dune stabilization as part of that conceptualization, because if you don't, doesn't matter what you do up top, the thing's going to disappear. It is at risk, great risk. So, thank you.
A couple of things. Christine asked me to please get the correction out. It is Tuesday, June twenty seventh, not Wednesday, June twenty seventh. She said, please let folks know about the open house. So that is done. Second, the Michigan Municipal League heads live with the league today. I posted that thirty minute recording on my Garn for Sagatuck page. It is well worth all of you all listening to because it is chock full of really good information coming from the legislature that pertains to us, the OMA that I've been trying to keep you up on as far as the remote meetings, the aggregate mining bills in the House, items related to the clerk and elections, and they run through it pretty fast in about thirty minutes, short term rentals. There's nothing that's been introduced yet. So just so you know, it's, it's well worth thirty minutes when you just have a chance to put the earplugs in, take a chance to listen to it. It's, it's worth listening to. And lastly, just another kind of positive, we had guests in this weekend. My spouse, Vicki's family was in from Indiana, Ohio and Georgia. And you know, it's always really nifty. It's cool when people come to town who've never been here and her nephew in law, he from Georgia basically said, this is just, this place has such a cool vibe. And I just, I like to share that with us because sometimes we forget it's, it's just really got a cool vibe. So with that.
Well, I, I would just like to say, I hope we never have to have a city council meeting in the summer where the entire city council chambers are wrapped in, 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 in plastic film because I feel a little bit like a ham sandwich that's been left out for about three days.
You're a ham.
I feel like a ham sandwich.
I've got to compete with the Douglas marriage, you know what I mean? Have you seen the koozies they're passing out? And it's like, okay, all right. But anyway, on a serious note, I, I would like to thank once again staff and council for, 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 for delivering to the citizens of this community, a balanced budget. And also I would just like And also, I would just like to thank all the staff that are here and those that are not here. Sarah's on the line, which is great. We couldn't, this council could not do it with all of you. You know, we, we ask a lot. We have a lot of initiatives. We're very active. Innovative, I think, council. We're certainly active. We got a lot of ideas. And you guys continue to find ways to deliver not only a balanced budget, but a lot of great projects and a lot of great amenities and just a great vibe in this city. So just, I want to tell you how thankful I am to, to be part of this team and to be working with you all. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Well, second.
Motion Lewis, second Muncie. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Meeting adjourned.
All right.
Good job, everyone.
I know.
That was very.